I'll sit on the other side because I can see the thing there. I just sit here and have a scan.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to Malibu City Hall for our Monday, October 16th, 2023 Regular Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Peake?
I am here.
You have a moral.
Thank you. Doug, would you kindly lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with item 5C continued to November 8th. And I'd like to request we dedicate the meeting to Walter Keller.
Walt Keller.
Yep.
I will second that.
Chair, I want to say the agenda says November 6th is the date of continuance. I heard November 8th. Did I hear that wrong?
November 6th.
November 6th.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're all in consensus on that. Anybody, everybody good?
Yes.
Okay. Rebecca, may I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 6th, 2023. The amended agenda was properly posted on October 10th, 2023.
Thank you. We are now at the time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Stewart?
Seems strange to be on this side for a moment. Chair Peake and Planning Commissioners, I'd like to take a moment to make a few comments about Jeff Jennings. As you may know, tonight will be his last Planning Commission meeting as he's retiring from this appointment effective at the end of tonight's meeting. Going to miss you, buddy. There are few, if any, residents of Malibu who have volunteered more, worked harder, or been more dedicated to the betterment of our Malibu than Jeff. I just heard from Norm Haney, he clocks you in at 40 years of public service. Amazing. I don't know how we ever thank you for that. Even before Cityhood in 1991, he was an advocate for our city. Since then, he's served on several city councils. He's been the mayor, he's been the chairman of this planning commission, and numerous other activities that the city can never repay you for all you've done. He's always been a statesman and a diplomat that we all can look up to and admire. When I was elected to the council, there was no question that one of my first calls was going to be to Jeff to ask him to be my planning commissioner. He said he was ready to retire and thank me for the offer. However, guilt works wonders. And when I pointed out that we had numerous items pending on the next few months, from the high school, ADUs, MRCA, and so on, he agreed to help me get started on my term. His only request was, let me go by the end of October. Well, I barely made it, Jeff. So Jeff will never be able to replace you, and all who follow you will hopefully try to emulate your wisdom, insight, and diplomacy. From me and on behalf of our residents of Malibu, thank you for all your service to our city, and we're going to miss you. But you're not that far away. I know where to find you. Thank you.
Anne Donin, followed by Joe Drummond.
Good evening. I would like to use my time to play a brief video. Thank you.
Next item is for CDP 1904-5. As mentioned, existing single-family residents sit atop a bluff to the south that runs parallel to Broad Beach and the Pacific Ocean. Next slide. The project includes the following scope. It's kind of a two-phase project. First is the demolition of the existing single-family residence and the associated development. Then they're going to conduct a bluff face slope repair and install five below-grade pile foundations. Afterwards, they're going to construct a new 3,389-square-foot, two-story, single-family home with an attached two-car garage, a new onsite wastewater treatment system, some hardscape and landscaping, and some grading and retaining walls. There are four discretionary requests that are being applied for. One is a variance for bluff top setback. One is a site plan review for height up to 28 feet for a pitch roof. One is a minor modification for a reduction of the front yard setback. And the last is a neighborhood standard request for. The applicant is requesting an additional post for their lower-level deck. Staff does not typically recommend variances for accessory structures. And so we added a condition that the lower-level deck shall be cantilever and that only foundations for the family home should be allowed to encroach in the bluff top setback.
On a bluff overlooking Broad Beach Road and was impacted by a landslide several years ago. It has been determined that because of the tight access, the only feasible way to protect the property is to tear it down and install a row of soldier piles. This is a picture of the landslide damage from 2018. Understandably, the owner is very worried and he wants to fix the problem, but his hands have been tied. Can I have the next slide, please? This is a picture of the landslide damage from, oh, sorry. This is another picture looking down at the slope from the house. These tarps would have been protecting the property for the past five years while we've been waiting for our approval. Down below, you can see the green wall. That's a big retaining wall on piles that Pat Radley built to protect his property after the sliding.
The applicant slash property owner must submit an erosion control study in compliance with LIP Section 14.4D2 and to the satisfaction of city geotechnical staff. The house must be at least four feet from the bluff retreat line.
And then can we play the rest of the video for my first of three minutes?
We can.
And the deck may not exceed the erosion line.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
For the issues of helping these people out, yes.
Chair Smith?
Oh, Jesus, these people need it, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so I wrote you an email this afternoon about a deck that I've had in planning for almost three years? Is it three or almost four years? Three years, I think. And it's, I'm in Big Rock, it's a landslide area, and it's never had any variance for accessory structures in Big Rock. So I was looking through past meetings, and this was one you guys voted on on February 6th, 2023, this year. And it actually had a full landslide on the site, and it was a 320-square-foot deck on top of a bluff, a coastal bluff. And it had $1,000, a thousand-square-foot addition on top of the original house. And there was no factor of safety, variance for factor of safety required. And that's what it said. It said, well, Tyler said it. Staff does not typically recommend variances for accessory structures. So why does a small deck, which has not one but two retaining walls and barely any slope, to ensure its stability owned by the property owner, where this one does not have any retaining wall owned by the property owner, and the entire structure was actually ruined, destroyed in a recent landslide? My home and property have never had any extension damage from a landslide. Why does this require a variance when the city's planning department does not typically recommend variances for accessory structures? An accessory structure that actually is permit exempt according to our city, county, and state codes, yet I've been tortured for the last almost three years on this study after study, requirement after requirement. So I do want to ask Adrian or you guys, how can you help me with this deck? Like, I just need it to be approved so I can move on. I never thought it would need a permit, and so it actually does. So I did do all the requirements for the APR, and now I'm being asked for a variance. And I've already paid over $3,000 in fees, and it's just too much. So please help. Thank you.
All right. Nobody else has public comment for anything not on the agenda that didn't fill out a slip by chance? Is that last one that just came in 2A?
No.
Okay. All right. Zoom, yes.
There is no raised hand.
Thank you. All right. Who wants to start? Craig? Dennis?
I'd first like to say happy birthday to Caroline and to start her day off well tomorrow. I want to tell Jeff that I would have never thought that sitting next to Mr. Haney in the old building in October of 2009, when I first went to my first meeting, that I would ever have the honor of sitting up here with you and have the honor of being on this commission. I feel so strongly about being here. It's everything. It means a lot. Jeff, you've done so much. You've been gracious when I've gone by your office. I remember asking Norm stuff during meetings, and he goes, well, you can go by Jeff's office and he'll talk to you. And that took me about six months to get the guts up to go do that, but I finally did. And you always take the time to get up from your desk, and you'll walk over to the small round desk and we'll talk. And you've been wonderful about that this whole time that I've been here. And to this day, that I have the honor of being here with you. And truly going to miss you. You bring so much to the community, both you and Chris. Lloyd Ahern and I have decided that the eight-foot bronze statue that should be out front probably should be a 10-footer, I think would be more appropriate because you've done that much. And there's a lot of good people in this town, and they've done it, and you've done a lot of it. And I want to tell you thank you in my short term of 14 years. But to have this opportunity to be next to you, I truly appreciate it. And all the best to you and to Chris.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dennis. Craig?
Okay, yeah, I've got a number of things here. First, I'll start off with Joe. Good question. I've seen your deck. I don't think it requires, we shouldn't still be talking about it. If you're alleging unfair treatment, that's something that you need to take up with the city manager and the council, I suppose, and beyond that court. Otherwise, take up with the council that the code needs to be clarified or changed. I don't know that we here have anything that we specifically can do for you. Before the dust dies down, a comment about poosh, not to be confused with a product sold on late-night TV that disguises pet odors. One of the many aspects of that that was problematic was the parking issues, and that kind of didn't get discussed quite as much. And I realized that that's a common thread in the recent problems we've had in Big Rock and on the party on Broad Beach and that a lot of these permit issues come down to parking issues and traffic especially. So I would just say that, let's keep that in mind when the council's revamping the TUPs and the SUP ordinances, that the focus really should be primarily on vehicles and how they interact with the community in a given situation. And yeah, the number of people is important in terms of things like OWTS and that kind of thing. But I think the vehicles are a good focus on that. Meanwhile, Picasso, some of you have maybe heard that the Coastal Commission just sided with the city of Newport Beach on their treating Picasso houses as, basically as timeshares under their ordinance. And Carmel has had a similar ruling from the Coastal Commission. So it sounds like Coastal is actually on our side. And my question for staff when I'm done will be, does Coastal's decision get us any closer to dealing with the Picassos? Or are we still just uh waiting and twiddling our thumbs till the lawsuits play out? On a related note, visitor serving is a concept that the Coastal Commission cares about a lot, and it's somewhere we do seem to differ with them on some things. And I think it's important that we we strengthen the the discourse that says that we Malibu are the most visitor-serving city in California per capita already. If you talk about daytime visitors and that there's a real distinction between nighttime, whether you need a motel or a hotel or an STR or whatever, and the daytime visitors that were already entertaining. And that, you know, I think the standard paradigm is that a a tourist comes and they want to stay somewhere in Santa Monica or further in town so they can go to Disneyland one day and maybe downtown to a museum another day and come out to Malibu one day. They don't necessarily want to spend the night out here. They want to be more centrally located. So uh, in in that light, talking about visitor serving and and what our our needs are and what our arguments are to the Coastal Commission. I thought it was interesting that the Chamber of Commerce has now merged with the Palisades Chamber of Commerce. And the the magazine that they now send out to people's houses is is labeled Palibu. Like, we're basically one economic community. And I mean, I think if if the businesses here are treating us as one economic community, then I think we need to be talking in those terms with regard to things like short-term rentals and hotels and motels. And uh, in that light, we could readily argue that we're already covered by the many short-term rentals in the Palisades. That we don't necessarily need more here. Um, it just as a as a bargaining chip in negotiating with Coastal. And likewise, if we're talking about more hotel hotels and motels here, the Palisades has none, zero. So if we're the same economic community, I would think we'd be saying, hey, you guys should have, you know, if the motels are needed, let's figure out how to put them there. Okay, next point, um regarding the FPPC complaint. Presumably Ms. Ravel, under no Revel Ravel, has at least half a clue about the conflict rules. Having been the head of the FPPC. So I hope I'm wrong about what looks like what happened in council's special closed session on Thursday. But um Attorney Rusin reported a vote to send a letter to the FPPC based on a three to two majority that included council members Grisanti and Riggins. Yet they're named as respondents in the complaint, apparently for having appointed development professionals to the commission that reviews development applications. Yeah?
Listen to our city attorney.
And so I just want to, you know, be sure that, you know, this is not on our agenda tonight. Obviously, I'm not here to silence any of you all. The the issue now is before council, so I will leave it at that. Commissioner Hill?
I I I feel like that was a warning, but I'm not sure what about. I mean, I I this is, I'm talking about items not on our agenda, so.
Correct, and 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 items that are the purview of the Planning Commission are are typically the the context for which this is about. Uh, or the Planning Department, uh Ms. Drummond's project being kind of a prime example. This is now before the city council. It is a complicated area. We can assure you that my uh my office as well as staff took it very, very seriously. Um, and so to the extent that you want to, you know, implore us to do so, it is there. I will say the FPPC has a process. This is typical in terms of, you know, we get a complaint. They typically reach out to either the um complaint about party or the city. We then have the option to provide a response. If I check my email correctly today, I believe that response either went out today or it's impending, so don't quote me on that. I'm not I'm not sure on that. And so to the extent that, you know, I guess you want to potentially criticize or or say that the council maybe got it wrong. That's, of course, your right as a as a Malibu resident. I'm not here to to silence you on that by any means. But I'm not necessarily sure that would be appropriate for the Planning Commission agenda.
Okay, I will I will abbreviate my comments. Understanding that this is something of a bully pulpit and that we talk about community matters all across the board, and and this is one of them. Uh, and I think this is important for the residents to to understand. And and I'll just say, i- it seems ironic to me that, given that the conflict laws are about perception, not actual wrongdoing, that so so that the public can be confident in the integrity of the decisions being made, right? That that they would still have been participating in that vote. You know, it's sort of like the foxes are making decisions about the hen house.
And and and, you know, I am not one to second guess your opinion. I will simply say that the merits of the allegation were taken very, very seriously.
And 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 my my final comment then would be, I don't understand that, uh, I mean, based on how the vote went. I hope the vote said, we're going to send a letter that says we want more time because we need to engage expert counsel. I don't know that we're doing that. It sounded like Trevor's writing a letter. Right?
And and so once again, I'm not going to, once again, I wasn't there during the closed session. Even if I was, I could not disclose anything that happened during there. I can assure you that best best in Krieger has said experts. It is not just city attorney Russen or myself, um, you know, delving into this for the first time. Going back to kind of, I guess, the substance of, well, hey, they were named in the in the complaint. I believe that's a simplified way of of viewing it. I would assume all five of you would not appreciate if someone filed a complaint against you all as a, you know, preemptive measure to get you knocked off a decision. Um, that is not the way that we want to conduct business here in the city. I'm not going to get into the merits. That's for the FPPC to to decide. I will simply say that we took it very, very seriously. We analyzed all the issues and, you know, that's that's that.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. So let me turn to Jeff and and just say, uh, yeah, we will miss your legal expertise here and your institutional memory. And uh, you you actually occasionally laugh at my occasional joke, so I'll miss that, too. And um, and I think others have 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 said some good things. Finally, I think there's there's been some discussion about naming the Charmley Park Visitor Center after Walt and Lucille Keller. That's, sounds like a good idea. I I think it's probably worth, before that gets too much momentum, going to actually talk to Lucille and see what her wishes are. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Well, I, to be brief, I will tend to agree with Craig. And I I wish it had been an open session instead of a closed session, but that's all I'm going to say on that. Now, as far as Joe's continuing to bring up her sixty-three or sixty-eight foot deck. The real problem, I think, is the continuance of not getting an answer. And a sixty-three foot deck is a sixty-three foot deck. Now, the only comment I can make is, I could walk up to the counter at City Hall and get a hundred and twenty foot shed permit handed to me over the counter. So one wonders why you take a floor and you add a building on top of it that's easier to get than the floor. So but my only request is that staff comes up with an answer. Uh, instead of, as she said, torture people. And we get this every once in a while. Especially on rebuilds and people don't understand the the rules. But this this is a sixty-three foot deck, so hopefully somebody can explain it. The one thing I want to do is is just remind people who Walt Keller was. He truly was the father of Malibu. And he worked for over fifty years. Getting us a city, fighting port, two ports, I mean, two marinas, uh, a nuclear power plant, a LNG plant, uh, stopping a hundred and sixty-five thousand people from moving here, a freeway, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And he did that over a long period of time. And when when uh we were gerrymandered out of having a city on the first vote, he kept fighting, and we had the second vote, and we got a city. So and his main goal was to preserve a unique place like Malibu. Not to make money, not to build shopping centers, not to add hotels, not to have short-term rentals, not to make money off the place. He went hiking practically every day on the trails around Malibu. And he enjoyed what Malibu used to be, okay? We still have some of that left in West Malibu. And uh, but he's the kind of leader that that gets things done by persistence, got things done by persistence. And it seems to me that it has now changed to development by persistence. And unfortunately for the people in East Malibu, Malibu isn't what it used to be. West Malibu parts of it are. And so hopefully we get a replacement for Walt someday. Uh, there's people that have worked with him for years. The Malibu Township Council started in nineteen forty-seven trying to protect Malibu. It's a long time ago. I've been here fifty years, and that isn't even close to nineteen forty-seven. So it takes work and it takes people like Walt to preserve a place like Malibu because there is no place left on the coast of California that has our weather, our ambiance, and our rural nature as it used to be. It it's just not there anymore. And uh, we're the last place. And when they pave over West Malibu, uh, it'll be gone. So hopefully, uh, people remember Walt. He never was out for anybody other than Malibu, and that's what's really important. So I'll let it go there. Thank you.
Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, thanks for the kind words. You know, when you take civics class in in junior high or high school, you're taught about sort of the ranking of local government to county, state, federal government. But I quickly learned very early on that um that local government can have an enormous impact on the lives of individuals that that live in the city. Anybody who's tried to process a house recently or any of the fire victims know that you spend a whole hell of a lot more time dealing with people in the city than you're ever going to spend talking to people in the federal government. But while all those decisions are important, uh, the ability to be one of the five people having a voice and making a decision uh, is a real privilege. And um, I appreciate the privilege. I thank the people who have given me the opportunity to to have that privilege. And um, and I thank the staff, those who are here now and those who, all of them who have preceded you, who have made the job a lot more uh pleasant and easier than than it might otherwise have been. I I'm I'm certainly going to miss sitting in the hearings for the fifteen or twenty electrical antennas that are going to be coming down the pipe that we see. I've been, I I got out just in time. So with that, um, we can move on. Thanks very much.
Jeff, you're a really wise person, and I just want to say thank you for making Malibu a better place. And you can rest your head at night knowing that you did that for a really long time, and you made a positive impact on a lot of people's lives out here. So thank you. Although you didn't support me in my first term, but or second term. Uh, Joe, has any planning commissioner ever gone, met with you and the planning department to help you uh, see any light at the end of the tunnel with this or get through this process? Craig has. When was the last time that happened? Two, and this has been going on for two years? Three years. So I think that a lot of people, it takes a that amount of time to get some things done. Sometimes when it's isolated like a deck, it seems like something that's very uh, the amount of time is out of control. But my hope would be that in the near future that that can come to a resolution. And if Craig wants to do that, if he doesn't, I'm willing to go do it and sit with you and uh, planning and figure it out and get to the end of this so that you don't have to deal with it anymore. So I will, I will offer that and uh, I also wanted to say that uh Walt Keller was a, had a positive impact on my life and many other people in the community. And just like how Jeff was saying that all politics is local, that's kind of where the I I don't want to say that the pavement is laid, but that's where the 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 bricks can build things. And I think that a lot of people spend a lot of time in local government and get very frustrated sometimes with the the process. But um, Malibu is a lot better off, I believe, for the residents and myself for being able to grow up here uh, under its own city. Because all politics is local and local control, I believe, is very important. And I really appreciate um Walt and Lucille for for fighting for that for our community. And uh, I know that when I when I left the the city council, I always, I I missed hearing from people like that and people that had been been around from so long. And just like, we'll miss Jeff, because I think that the experience, both legal and spending so much time here, is really helpful. So it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Go ahead.
As long as we're on the subject of the FPPC, let me make one point. According to the FPPC, members of this commission are not permitted to talk to anybody on staff about anybody's project. I did. I had a a a client who had a question about a project. I called staff. And before long, I had a letter from the FPPC telling me that under no circumstances was I ever to talk to anybody on staff about anybody's project. So just take that for what it may be.
And and just to clarify, I have not done that, anything like that on Joe's behalf. I I did go a year or two and look at her deck and give her some comment and say, yeah, I don't think this needs a permit, et cetera, and kind of uh, gave her some some direction. But at no point did I talk to any staff member or intercede or anything like that. So but but let me point out, too, that among us up here, and it's probably on the council, too, there's there's probably unanimous feeling that something like this should be really much easier to do. I know, Dennis, you said things like this.
Got it. So so gentlemen, as as a project that, and once again, I do I do not know the intricacies or details. But if it may come before you, this body, we need to be very careful.
Okay, I'm not talking about her deck now. I'm just saying more generally that the easy things, the simple, small things, you should be able to just show up and get a permit over the counter. You know, and then the the part where we disagree is I say on the high end, if you're doing a ten thousand square foot house, maybe there are more hoops you should jump through. But on the on the low end of things, I think everybody agrees that needs to be easier.
And I think that Joe also realizes that the other project that is being referenced, that project went through far more hoops than your deck did to get to the point where it was. And far more studies and other things like that before it came before the planning commission. So I don't think it's fair to compare the two in that light, while it may seem that way. That was a full CDP. You're going under an APR, the requirements. You know, there's there's different things that are required for each. And the only reason why I was suggesting the meeting was that it was not going to come before the commission because it was an APR. That was the only reason for my suggestion, so. And in any event, um. All right, let's.
One last comment?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I beg the planning department not to send us sixty-three square foot decks. We'll be here forever. And I thank the city council for not approving the sirens, and we have to sit through thirty-two telephone poles. So, you know, we we only have so much time. Thank you.
Adrian, did, I don't see Richard. Did you have some comments?
Richard's still on vacation. Um, he'll be back tomorrow, though. Good evening. The only comment I have is um, I'm, I just want to uh thank Commissioner Jennings uh for all his hard work um, and uh all his time that he's dedicated to the city and the planning commission. Um, we want to uh, you know, thank you from um the planning department, and uh, we want to wish you well in your next chapter, so appreciate it.
All right.
And Jeff, you're going to come back and sit here with Norm every every night or? It's the best ticket in town.
Trying to come up with some sort of a way that I can make your life more difficult than it would otherwise be, but I don't know. I'm sure that I'm, I don't know, sitting there in the chair is, that's. there in the chair is, that's.
Maybe a martini in a Zoom would be better.
We are on to consent.
I would like to pull the minutes. 3B1.
Okay. I guess I will second that so we can talk about it. Go ahead.
Okay, it's very simple. I would like to, with the, I would like to page two, Commission Staff Comments, Paragraph 3, second line, I'd like to eliminate the word insanely. I don't think it's a lawyer term and I discussed it with our city attorney and he agrees with me.
I have a clarification and a comment. I, I, I will second John's request there. The clarification, we got a new version of the minutes. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it, but I, I had a couple clarifications that I thought were important, one being that I didn't ask for your guys' resignations. What, what I said was looking at the guidance, it looked like either you were supposed to do that or get a letter from the FPPC. And, but I, and I said, I expect you guys will stay. So I just wanted to make that clear. There was one other thing, similar vein, that I don't need to detail now because Rebecca has indeed fixed it. And I guess my, my last, my question about the minutes is, or just the clarification, that I had said that we didn't get in the minutes any sort of itemized accounting of all the requests that we made on the La Chusa Beach project, that when we brought it back, we were talking about a lot of different things. And just to clarify, I don't think any of us have had time to read that here now to approve that if it's at all dispositive, but just to understand that the record is actually the video of the meeting, right? So we can go ahead and say, okay, on the minutes, without necessarily knowing that every little detail there is correct? Is that?
Anybody else?
Is that a fair representation? I guess that's Patrick.
Rebecca, go ahead.
Well, just.
Basically, if the commission as a group wanted to have the minutes list those specific requests as part of the motion as originally requested by Commissioner Hill, you would need to have a majority vote to do so. Or we can adopt the minutes with the minor corrections made. We do have slides that reflect the minute, the list of items that were requested from the video of the meeting. And each of you have a printed copy of that at your desks if you'd like to move the slide forward a bit.
Go ahead.
I just want to answer the question posed by Commissioner. He is correct that the formal record of proceeding is the actual video. I know that there were some feelings from this commission that, hey, maybe we want some analysis or reasoning in the minutes because that's easier to reference and you don't have to go back. Or maybe there may not even be a video based off of, you know, 25 years ago. Moving forward, we will always have those videos. And so it's really a judgment policy call for you all. The formal record, as Commissioner Hill stated, would be the video of the, of the actual meeting.
And from my perspective, just having a list, even if it's not entirely complete, is helpful just when we go back and look at and go, oh yeah, that's the meeting where we had a bunch of concerns that we wanted to add. And then if we're still at a concern, then we'd know to go look at the videos.
I'd like to make a quick comment on the videos. Up until about five years ago, we had five years worth of videos and we could look back at items like we have tonight that are four years old. And now we only have basically two and a half years. And it's impossible to go back other than going through a whole bunch of rigmarole. So I don't know why, you know, you can store every, every sentence everybody said on a satellite farm. And so we need to, we need to have this available.
Can I make a, ask a question of Parker or that, either one? How long do the videos go back online?
We have, I'll have to double check the dates, but I believe it goes back to 2007. Yeah. So we did YouTube. YouTube goes back a little bit more recent than 2007, but we have an archive prior to that. Usually if someone needs.
And how do they access that?
Either if it's not on YouTube, you can do a public, public records request and then I'll pull it up and I'll send it.
Okay. Is there going to be, and maybe this would be something that the council wants to look at, is whether or not there's a way to have those videos just accessible so we don't have to bog down our staff with the public records request stuff, but then that that can be available to people? And my question for our city, or our attorney here was going to be, what's the common practice of other cities?
And so I can only speak for the jurisdictions that I am lucky enough to also represent. And it typically, they're, yes, they're, they're not nearly as, as detailed. It's very just motion made, speakers, there's no attempt to, you know, summarize the narrative. It is just, you know, person X spoke, person Y spoke, person Z spoke. But once again, I must caveat with that, that's, you know, the handful of cities that I, that I represent. Unfortunately, I haven't been able, I didn't do a survey throughout, but I would think that's more common than not.
So now just going back on the archive, is it common for most cities to have the video stuff online and anything that's, you know, we, what period do they have to make a public records request? How old does it have to be?
Through 2018, they're readily available through the.
So anything prior to 2018, they have to make that request for?
There's nothing available prior to 2020 on our agenda in minutes.
It's two things.
It used to be five years.
It's two things. YouTube goes back about four and a half years right now, so 2018-ish. And, but John's right, the agendas only go back three years and, and then it's harder to track something down.
Okay. I have another question for, I guess we don't have a city clerk here, but I was going to ask, do we get a lot of records requests for those minutes or agendas?
We do not get very many Public Records Act requests that I'm aware of for video content. Parker may be able to express that more definitely.
I get maybe three or four every six months.
So in your estimate, it wouldn't be worth going through the time to upload all that stuff to some kind of an archive for people to access?
We could if that's what.
Well, it's not our decision, that's the council's decision.
I don't want to upload it, I just don't want to delete it, which is what we do. Every year we delete the prior year, the two years ago.
No, so we, that's not true. That's not true.
It's not true.
It's not true. It is not, it is not true. The city does not delete the video.
They deleted from the agenda and the video.
I understand the webpage for which you may typically go, that's a different thing than we delete the entirety of the video. So you are correct. It could be an ease of access question, but we have to be crystal clear, the city does not delete the planning commission video after two years or three years.
So I think that John and/or Craig, maybe one of you should go to the city council and request that you guys figure out a way to have this displayed in a way that's more easily accessible so that people don't have to do a public records request. And that would alleviate the concern, is that correct?
Yes, and I will and I have. And what I'm really concerned about is us, and I will bring it up when we come to an item tonight, being able to do that.
Okay. So now we have the second issue that deals with the agenda and specifically the MRCA comments as reflected on these notes. And you want to see them come back itemized as to what?
No, I don't need to see them come back if, just to clarify that in fact the video is dispositive and this is just indicative of what we're doing, but I thought it would be helpful to have some indication on the minutes that we added a bunch of stuff.
Okay.
I'm making a motion, we approve the minutes as with the deletion of insane or whatever word I wanted to take out of it.
Insanity.
Insanity, yeah.
And, and as revised with the changes that Rebecca implemented regarding the comments I pointed out.
Latest delivered.
Anybody else, any comments on that? You know, I, I have no problem doing that. I'm just going to say this, Craig, and be very straightforward about it, is that you have a knack to keep bringing up this FPPC stuff and you're the only person that continues to do that. And it's not making me think very positive about you. So I'm just going to say that straight out and be honest with you. That I don't think, and I'm getting it from a lot of other people, to be very forceful with my words, but I think that that's polite and kind. The process is going to play out. I think the city attorney, as he stated, has taken this extremely seriously. And if it is such that they think that I, there's a conflict of interest, I respect whatever that decision is, and you will watch the state change a lot. It's the way that it's been presented to me, that you would see commissions, city councils across the state of California probably wipe out half of the people or more that are serving on it.
Just to clarify, my mentioning it here now was to, precisely to say, it said I basically was accusing you guys and, and that, and I wasn't, and I looked at the video. And so I just wanted to clarify that I'm not.
That's fine. Okay. And I just feel that whether it's this item, I probably should have said it earlier during public comments because it's unrelated. I apologize. John's got a motion. Do I have a second for that?
I second it.
Okay. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. We are now on item 5A. All right. ZTA 23-003, extend deadlines for non-conforming in-kind disaster rebuild projects. Do we have a small staff report? Mr. Fernandez?
We do have a staff report. We'll try to make it as brief as possible. Good evening. The item before you tonight is a zoning text amendment to extend deadlines to rebuild legal non-conforming structures damaged or destroyed in the Woolsey Fire. To give those watching from home a little background, the city council in 2019 adopted ordinance number 445, establishing deadlines to submit a planning verification for non-conforming structures to rebuild in-kind or in-kind plus 10%. The council adopted ordinance, excuse me, ordinance number 445 is also known as the Woolsey Fire Code amendments. The purpose of the ordinance was to create an expeditious process to rebuild Malibu after the Woolsey Fire. The ordinance provided property owners two years from the date of the fire, November 8th, 2020, to initiate the planning application process. In addition, the, in addition, the ordinance provided four years to obtain building permits for non-conforming structures. The ordinance provided owners the means of requesting time extensions from these deadlines. All the extensions combined could not be more than five years total. Stated in the report in 2020, property owners expressed to the city council that numerous obstacles existed to initiate the rebuild process, including the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result, in 2021, the city council amended ordinance number 445, adding an additional year to the deadlines. In September, the city council and members of the public once again expressed concern regarding the continued obstacles to complete the fire rebuilds for non-conforming structures. The city council directed staff to proceed with an ordinance to extend the rebuild deadlines by three years to coincide with Assembly Bill 1500, which amends the Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 70.5, to allow property owners an additional three years to reconstruct improvements to the property destroyed or damaged by the Woolsey Fire. Just give me one second. Concurrently, the council extended the deadlines for the Woolsey Fire Fee Waiver Program by three years. The proposed ordinance before Planning Commission tonight is to consider the council's direction to extend the deadlines by three additional years. The slides demonstrate the status of the rebuild of homes destroyed in the Woolsey Fire. Please note that since the report was published for this item, staff made a correction to the number of destroyed homes to 453 compared to the 466. Staff deducted the 12 destroyed multifamily units. As of the date of this report, 11 projects are in planning review, 35 pending submittal for building safety review, 51 in building safety review, 128 under construction, and 144 single-family homes have been completed. 84 have been submitted and 75 are the same owners as the owners when the fire occurred. This slide demonstrates that the proposed three-year extension of each deadline, please note that the deadline to file a planning verification is retroactive from 2021 to 2024. The new deadline to submit building permits would be November 8th to 2026, and property owners would have the ability to request time extension totaling no more than nine years. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for your questions.
All right. Does any, I guess you probably wouldn't have any disclosures for this, but other than you, everybody was affected by it in some form. All right, we got a couple speakers here, a few of them. Mr. Ireland, followed by Josh Zaucha? Did I say it right?
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. It's, it's an honor to be here in front of you. And Mr. Jennings, I want to thank you very much for your years of service. It's a legend and I don't know that anyone else can approach it. I want to speak strongly in support of Zone Text Amendment 23-003, and perhaps give you a little bit of an idea about how it affects us so personally. 25 years ago, I wanted to do something about Western Malibu and what I could perceive as the potential for serious overdevelopment. I was contacted by a property owner who had this incredible property dedicated to recreation. And he had a couple of choices. One, there were some people telling him he should divide it into 216 condominiums. He personally didn't want to do that. He grew up in an environment where he worked in camps in Michigan as a young man. And he called us up. At that time, I was working at Mountains Restoration Trust. And he asked if we had an interest in this. And I about fell off my chair. Obviously, yes, it's one of the most stunning, beautiful properties in Malibu. He encouraged me to work with him. There were other entities, developers and other park agencies out there trying to do something about putting it under their jurisdiction. I'm not affiliated with any of them. So regardless of how things have happened in the past, and I am aware of it, we are an independent nonprofit land trust dedicated to protecting, we originally, this one property in Western Malibu, the Malibu Riding and Tennis Club. I've been there for 25 years through a lot of different circumstances. We started with an idea of no new development, reimagine, repurpose what was there, see how we could possibly change the recreation usage to something more reflective of today's activity. At that time, the tennis was not as popular as it once was when the property was originally developed in 1973. The equestrian usage of the property could be expanded to over 250 horses. That activity also was experienced. That activity also was experiencing a downturn in usage and activity. At that time, I was getting involved in hiking. I started training with the Angeles chapter of the Sierra Club. I became more and more interested in outdoor recreation, how it can benefit people, how it can help people find a healthy way of living. And those were all the reasons that I felt we needed to do it. What had happened was we were underinsured.
Your time is up.
Time is up.
Wrap it up 10 more, 15 more seconds.
Okay. There simply wasn't enough time to put together all of the planning documents, being underinsured and overwhelmed with the amount of loss. It took us four years and five months just to navigate through the litigation side of this. That wasn't four years that I could push for development or redevelopment. It was a time that it robbed us of being able to legitimately access.
Needless to say, we could say that you're very much in favor of having this extension.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Josh? And Josh, you can correct me on how I said your last name. Not a problem. Zauca.
Okay. Good evening, members of the commission, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I also have the privilege of speaking on behalf of Malibu homeowners and business entities who lost properties in the Woolsey Fire. As many of you know, obviously, and may have experienced yourselves, the road to meaningful recovery is very long, especially when that process entails litigation, as has been mentioned, you know, the complexities of the planning process, obstacles pertaining to financial challenges and accounting, different things of that nature, including the effects of the pandemic that were mentioned here earlier, substantial and relatively unprecedented disruptions to the supply chain wreak havoc on construction timelines. And the ripple effect of delay caused by that disruption is still being addressed by those who have yet to conclude the process of rebuilding and recovering. This extension of time representing by zoning text amendment 23003 would be a relief to fire victims who have been slowed in their recovery through absolutely no fault of their own. Indeed, for those still awaiting pending legal recovery, the proposed zoning text amendment may mean the difference in the availability of a proper rebuild timeline on the favorable regulatory terms that fire victims justifiably deserve. Thank you for the commission and your consideration of this important issue and your service to the community of Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Denson? And then you're followed by Beatrice Misselink. Good evening, Jaren.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I have no speech prepared at all. But as somebody who's been affected by the Woolsey Fire, I saw that there was a chance to have an extension on some non-conforming structures. I originally applied for one of those extensions when they were first offered, but I think they were only offered for two years at the time. Of course, that two years did pass, and after trying to completely rebuild a home, go through all of the insurance issues and, you know, litigation, I think we settled just in like January of this year. So we were able to get a lot of the construction done on the main residence. However, some of the additional structures and stuff like that, we've had to hold off on and wait to see if there was even enough money to finish those things. So I just wanted to come up here and voice my support for an extension so that we can fully rebuild what we had because we have, you know, we're talking a lot about Western Malibu staying Western while we're trying to, of course, put a barn back so we can have horses again and things that predated cityhood and stuff like that. So that's it. Thank you, guys, all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Beatrice?
Hello, everyone. It's been a long time. We were burned out completely. Everything gone. I'm here to support this amendment. I think we put in for our rebuild in-kind plus 10% the summer of 2019. We only got the approval in May of this year. I could cry a river about the process. We're still not close because rules have changed, and now we got to build a bunch of pylons where there weren't pylons before. I don't want to gripe. There's a lot to gripe about, but I'm really in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Parker, do we have anybody on Zoom?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. All right, guys. Any comments? John?
Yeah, you all received an email, and my name is blanked out, but I admit I'm the author. I just had some questions, and it turns out, just so the public knows, I'm more concerned about the residents before the fire than the people who are taking advantage of them, buying these for a flip. And fortunately, of the 84 owners, 75 of them are original owners. They hung on. And that's who I care about. And so, but we, it became clear that this ordinance must cover everybody. So I think it's important we pass it. I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that AB 1500 basically is governing what we can do, and this is it. And I think we should all support getting Malibu back. It's amazing how long it's taken, and I can't imagine, what is it, 2026 is the, 28 is the deadline? 10 years? Or is it nine years? How it can take nine years to rebuild your house is just amazing to me, but it's a good part of your life. So hopefully, we can just pass this the way the council wants us to and the way we want to and what's best for Malibu.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I agree with John. The thing that is so troubling, I think, and that causes people so much difficulty, apart from just the inherent process itself, is that you're talking about a lot of people who never wanted to build a house, you know. It's the world's worst club to belong to. And you would think, you know, I've been here a long time, right? You would think that I would have some familiarity in the process. We got our building permits first of September. We broke ground three or four days ago. So the process is the punishment. And I would encourage you to pass this in order, there are just people out there who who just want to put it aside because they never wanted to build a house, and they don't know what the process is like. And there's really no place you can go. You know, there's no YouTube channel that says this is how you go about it. And so it's definitely something that's needed.
Dennis?
We just need to pass it.
Craig?
Yeah, just some clarification. I agree with everybody here. We're talking about in-kind, like-for-like, plus no more than 10%. And I just wonder, I know we can't distinguish on the basis of owners, you know, versus, original versus new flipper types, but is there anything that, any mechanism, this is a question for staff, that we could ensure that this is a little more airtight and it is limited to the like-for-like plus 10% and that it's not, we won't have the cases where I think we've had before where that's what somebody comes in, and then they come in, you know, they sell the house, somebody comes in, and now it's 200% house suddenly. You know, because we have, we do have this finding to make here that it is consistent with the general plan, and the general plan talks about, you know, the vision and mission statement, rural character, et cetera, and specifically says trankus is, or Malibu Park, I should say, is single-story ranch houses. It actually says that there. So I'm just wondering, is there, is there anything we can do in the way we formulate this to kind of keep it constrained to the intent of it? Any kind of like guardrails we could add to this?
So I have the dates here with me, and I can't find them now. But I believe as of June or July, the city is no longer allowing the two-step process for fire rebuilds. So from then, the process is either a like-for-like plus 10%, which is a process that would be handled through a planning verification, or if they were to add more than the 10%, then they would forfeit their planning verification, and they would have to come in with a new application for a coastal development permit. Or they would have to wait until their development is fully constructed and final. Then they would submit a new application at that point for their addition or any other accessory structures.
Go ahead.
Can I make a comment?
Thank you.
In 1983, I stayed with my house when the fire came to Paradise Cove. And myself and a roommate saved our house with a shovel because the fire department ran, ran away, and I saw them run away. So that was, a new term came up in 2018. It's called "you're on your own" fires. And I actually saw fire, and I had to go down in a gully as a 76-year-old guy with a little hose, and I saved my house again. And again, it was, the fire department ran away. So I think it's very sad that we have all these, all this talk about keeping Malibu safe and all this fire stuff, and then I'm sure all you went through this, if you stayed, you saw, nobody helped you. And I sure hope it doesn't happen next time. We don't need 430 or 550 people in East Malibu if Topanga ever catches on fire going through the same situation. And I think it's, I sat there at 2:30 in the morning knocking on the window of each of six fire trucks parked next to the fire department on Station 71 and telling them not to let the house next door to the fire station burn down. And they said, "It's not our job." Okay, so everybody should take heed of what you have gone through, and don't let this happen again. Thank you.
Okay, well, I will make.
I also want to thank Scatter for being on, the people who actually stood up and tried to help.
Yeah, that was difficult, very difficult. I guess as the only person that was on the city council when we dealt with this, that was not fun. And I am so sorry to this day of everybody that has to deal with that process because it is not fun. And I hear it from people, and I just hope that all of you that haven't gotten the place to see your project through, see some light at the end of the tunnel, and hopefully that we, when we, I'm thinking we're going to pass this, that that gives a little bit of relief, and you guys can get moving forward with the process to get back home. Because that's, home is a sacred place, and it's no fun when it's violated like this, and it's vaporized.
And I can make a motion to pass the resolution as staff recommends.
I will second that. And you guys want to do a roll call, or are we all in favor? I think we're all in favor. Everyone's in favor. Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So 5B? All right, item 5B, CDP, Amendment Number 20-017, An Application to amend Coastal Development Permit Number 1340, to allow the installation of landscaping in the public right-of-way to visually screen out of the recently approved water tank at 5723 Bush Drive. Adrian?
Yes. Good evening again. In 2020, the Planning Commission granted an approval to replace the water tank with a larger tank. The motion to approve the project included the removal of a condition of approval requiring the proposed landscaping. The landscaping was part of the original application. The application was conditioned, and it took several years to bring the item back to the Planning Commission. Before the item was rescheduled for hearing, the applicant removed the landscaping due to fire concerns. This was right after the Woolsey Fire. Nevertheless, staff included the landscaping as a condition, and this was to serve as a visual mitigation to the neighbors across Bush Drive. The neighbors across Bush Drive had met with staff over the course of the application and previously advocated for the landscaping to be installed. After the project was approved, one of the neighbors submitted a request to appeal the Planning Commission's decision. The applicant and appellant reached an agreement for the appellant to withdraw the appeal provided the applicant submitted the proposed amendment to reinstate the landscaping. This application was submitted shortly after the agreement. The subject property is located north of Harvester Road on the west side of Bush Drive. The property has been developed with a water tank and other accessory development. The proposed amendment is for landscaping in, as shown in the site plan. The landscaping consists of toions and sea cliff buckwheat. All of the proposed landscaping is located entirely within the public right-of-way. The project also includes some edits to conditions of approval to reflect the applicant as an easement holder and not as the property owner of the site. Lush, tall landscaping existed in front of the tank prior to the submittal of the original water tank application. The landscaping was cut down to a stump sometime after the application was submitted. At the time these pictures were taken in 2020, the trees were already regrowing. The proposed application would reintroduce similar landscaping that existed prior to the water tank application. This, the staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed amendment as condition, and that concludes my presentation.
All right. Do we have any public speakers on this?
Disclosures? Thank you.
I said we do disclosures first, and I believe we.
Okay. Anybody have any disclosures?
None. None.
I participated in the prior hearing.
Craig?
I watched the July 20 memorialization hearing. It took me at least half an hour to track down the 2020 actual substantive hearing because it wasn't, the agenda wasn't online. I did finally figure it out. So I did watch that, and I also have toion and buckwheat on my property, and I'm very familiar with their characteristics.
Do you like the toion buckwheat?
I do in that context. In this context, I have some issues.
Okay. All right, all right. Well, are there any public speakers?
The applicant is Eddie McGuino.
Is he here?
He's on Zoom.
Oh, okay. All right, let's hear from him.
Eddie, you're unmuted.
Eddie, are you there? Can you hear us?
He can hear us, but we're not getting audio back from him.
Okay. Eddie?
I believe it was his intent to respond to any questions the commissioners might have this evening rather than to make a formal presentation.
Okay, can you see anything from him on there? Like, is he waving his hand or anything?
No, nothing.
Can you send him a message and see if he can hear us on there? Or what about just through the Zoom app? Can you just do it on the Zoom app and just message him and say, "Can you hear us?" No, can't do that. Okay. All right, well.
I'm going to have a piece of paper. Can you hear us?
Can you do that? But he can't see him. There's no video. Eddie, yeah, but I have no way of communicating with him.
So do we.
What do we want to do?
Close the public hearing?
What do I do?
Can he call in?
Yeah, I say we give him, is there, there's no way we can reach out to him and-
Well, let's get on it. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. It is 7:45. Will we be back here at 7:55?
If you get ahold of him, tell him, "Keep talking." We'll be back.
While you're recessed, any commissioners who feel adventurous, there are some refreshments in honor of Commissioner Jennings' final meeting with us.
Oh, wow!
And they are from a Thai bakery that was having a soft opening, so I don't know what I've got you. They, I asked them for a sampling of what they had.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Eduardo Magino from Los Angeles County Public Works Water Works Division. Hello? Hi, good, hi, good evening. Anyone hear me?
Eddie, can you hear us?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we'll get started momentarily.
I appreciate that.
All right, everybody, welcome back to our October 16 Planning Commission meeting. Looks like we've squared away our technical difficulties with our speaker here. And Eddie, I don't want to butcher your last name, but you're ready to go.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Eddie McGuino. I'm with Los Angeles County Public Works Water Works Division. I oversee the capital development of the Water Works Capital Improvement Program for District 29 in Malibu. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to answer any questions from the planning commissioners, or if any questions from the public.
All right, perfect. We're gonna call on you if we need you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any comments?
I have quite a few.
Do we have any other?
No speakers?
Sorry about that.
No, there's no other raised hands.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed unless we're asking questions. But, all right, Craig, go ahead.
Okay. I'm wondering why there's not a variance request for an eight-foot fence and tall plantings? And, and sort of related to that, I don't understand how you hide a metal tank painted green with an eight-foot-high green-painted metal fence. It just seems like, what do we, what? I have some issues about the vegetation and how that goes too, but I don't understand how we're talking about an eight-foot fence and when normally the front yard, we're supposed to have a 42-inch-high something. Does, is there, is there an exception for public utilities, or what, how, what are we talking about?
All right, Adrian?
So we are not talking about an eight-foot fence. That's not part of the application before you today. So the eight-foot fence was part of the original application, which has already been approved by the Planning Commission. And that part of the application included a variance, and that variance was granted. What's before you today is an amendment that would allow the landscaping in front of that fence to be installed. Now, that landscaping, it's entirely within the public right-of-way. So it is not subject to the same requirements as fencing within the front yard setback that are inside, within the property line or inside the private property. This is public right-of-way, so it's not subject to the same requirements.
Okay.
Craig, I will say this, it does seem a little counterintuitive. But with that being said, what's your next comment?
So on the landscaping, we're talking about toyon. And the public right-of-way is 17 feet wide. Toyon grows 20 feet wide, 20 feet high. It grows big. And it seems like, a couple different, I have a couple of thoughts about what you do with the landscaping here. One would be to pick something that has more of a vertical aspect to it, that doesn't spread quite as much, because presumably this right-of-way also is still a walkway, and I think an equestrian trail, if I understand correctly. That, so we don't want to just be blocking it entirely. So maybe a, something a little bit more vertical, like a California myrtle or a Prunus leoni, Santa Cruz cherry. Not ficus, not pittus borum. So that would be one thought. Another thought would be, I don't know how you hide this fence really at all. It, you're still gonna see it. Why pretend? Maybe you just plant a couple, plant buckwheat along the bottom that softens the bottom contour of it, and makes it less monolithic. But you're, you're not really trying to hide something that you can't actually hide, and that. There's also a concern about fire hazard. I don't know how the, the water tank is, responds. If it's metal, how susceptible is it to any kind of hazard? If you had a 20-foot-high toyon growing over that eight-foot fence, does that in any way threaten the tank itself? Or is it, is it completely happy to have fire all around it? Just seems to me we want to go a little bit more contained on the vegetation on the front.
All right, John?
Well, I, I had trouble with this, this staff report. And so I sent a bunch of questions to Adrian. I think it's deficient. Nowhere in it says that there was an extension made. So I tried to calculate whether the CDP had run out, and the way I calculated it had. But I was informed after, today, after getting all these questions and answers, that yes, there was an extension, but it was not put in the recitals. And I was at the original hearing. I remember long discussion about the fire hazards in the fire tank and the foliage. And that's one reason why it was turned down. I tried to find the tape, couldn't find it. Okay, now, and, and this is, as staff said before, we can always ask staff, but you can't ask staff on a Friday and get it on a Monday. So, no, I want to go through-
Let's focus on the thing here.
I am focusing on it, okay? So, one question I had was, and this is a question for Mr. Donigan, is how does a commissioner vote on an amendment to a CDP which they have never seen? And don't have, don't have, it's not available to them, and they don't have the tape available to them. Now, this is an amendment to a project. Granted, it's a small amendment, but there's no information at all about what was discussed or what was passed. Isn't that, isn't that something that should be required of a planning commissioner to know? Because the staff told me, "Oh, we don't, we don't have to tell them that." Or provide the old CDP, because this is an amendment.
Sure, so the, the CDP amendment process is a distinct and separate one than, say, when you all continue a hearing. In that instance, you are 100% right, that if a commissioner is absent at the first one, and they, and then they want to participate, they must be, you know, brought up to speed. The, in the CD, in the CDPA process, the CCBD amendment process, I am not aware of any legal mandate. That doesn't mean that you guys can't request it. That doesn't mean that you guys can't say, "We don't feel comfortable with the information provided, and we don't feel we have been given enough."
Okay, so it's, it's just-
But it is not a legal mandate, because as you can imagine, there could be, I'm trying to recall, I believe it was 2002, the RCDP was, was certified. So, you know, I, I, I would assume that we have some information, but we may not have every single piece of information from 5003.
I understand that answer. I understand that answer. I, I just would assume that somebody who's on the commission would like to know what they were amending. But now, then I wondered why, why we could, the question's already been asked, why we, we don't have to follow the rules and get a variance when you go over 42 inches in the front yard? And now I understand that you can do anything you want on, on a city property. You can have a 100-foot, you can put the Eiffel Tower out there, and you don't need a variance. Which seems strange to me. But the reason I'm discussing this is this is all stuff that came up before, and, and we didn't know. Now, I looked through the staff report, and the city biologist, included in the staff report is a 2020 city biology approval that says it shall not be over 42 inches. It shall not be over 42 inches. Okay? Because he never reviewed this. And that was for the prior thing. So we're sitting here with findings we're making on a 2020 staff report that limits it to 42 inches. That seems strange to me. And-
Are you sure that the area that it wasn't referencing is the area that's inside the-
That's the only biology report in our staff report.
Okay.
Okay, the only one. Which I would think that somebody would, as Craig brought up, toyons. I looked up toyons. They do grow 20 feet. And they do become a ball. So one of the concerns we had was, well, how do you walk up the street? Well, the concern, as I remember from the hearing before, is how do you keep from burning a fireman up? Because we required the fire department to put in pumps that have to be serviced and turned on. And you've got a big ball of fire in front of you. How do you get to the pumps if you can't even get to the tank? And it's also a bathroom. So I have, I, I am gonna ask that we make an amendment to this, that we limit this to eight feet, because there is no limit in our, in our resolution. None. It could be 100 feet. And so that, and-
Can I ask a question of, is it Enrique that's on the phone? Eddie, sorry. Eddie, how tall is the current tank?
26 feet.
26 feet high?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Is it 26 feet tall?
Can we hear him? Is he there?
The tank is 24 feet.
Hello?
It's 24 on one side, 24 on the other.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, it's 24-foot-high tank, is that correct?
One, yeah, one side is 24-foot-high, and then the other side is 26 feet-high because of the, the existing of topography.
So, John, why would you want to limit the landscaping to eight feet if the whole reason for the landscaping is to screen the tank? I don't understand that at all.
For safety. Okay, you have to walk around this tank in a fire. And this tank is basically for a wildfire. You have to, you have to, you have to be there. The fire department is going to use it.
I don't think the fire department's gonna use the tank. I think the fire department's gonna use water that's through the distribution that may come from the tank.
Right, and the tank has-
And I don't think there's gonna be any servicing of a tank in the middle of a fire, at all. Period. Full stop.
No, 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 no. We went through, if you would watch the tape- We went through, if you would watch the tape or read the staff report, it was denied because we actually required them to put in generators.
That's the generator for the pump station?
At the tank.
For to pressurize.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so somebody's got to go in there and make sure it's working. That's where the driveway is. Now, so what you're saying is, and Frank...
I'm just not following it because of the way that I see it.
Well, can I speak?
You can, but you're talking about structures that are on the opposite side of the thing, so I don't, I just don't get it.
Can you hand that to me, and I'll show you something?
Show me.
How do you get in? Right there.
You walk in.
Yeah, with a 25-foot tree burning that's 20 feet wide on a 10-foot driveway? Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, if you need to get in there, you use a chainsaw, you remove the tree.
Brave and flash Gordon.
I've done it.
And, no, I'm not done, if I could speak, okay? So, we have a biologist who hasn't looked at the plants. We have a commissioner, and I included in my questions to Adrian, a description of what toyon does, and he's right, it's 20 feet high, 20 feet wide, okay? So, by limiting the height, you have a walk-around on the tank that's required. It's 10 feet.
Do you limit the height of sycamore trees that the city puts in in the right-of-way in Legacy Park or in another walk space up by the waste of water?
Sycamore trees are not toyons.
They're way larger, but I'm just saying, I don't understand the reason for putting on a, if you said the reason for limiting the height is because it's blocking...
Are we debating this, or can I give you an answer?
If it was blocking somebody's view, or that was the concern, that would be understandable, but here we have a tank that's, people want to block visually.
You have a tank that is seven feet from an eight-foot fence, okay? A tank, and it has a walk-around. The toyon is 20 feet wide. How are you going to walk around?
You use a hedger and make it so it doesn't get 20 feet wide. Yeah, go ahead.
We have no limits on any of that. We don't say, "Use a hedger. Make sure the bush is this wide, that wide, this high, that wide." There's nothing in here at all.
So, let's offer a solution to get to the point of where we can have something that we can approve. If you have a concern with it, ask to put something in there.
I am trying. I just said I wanted to put something in there.
Okay, let's let Donna speak.
Okay, I'm not done yet.
Eddie, are you with us?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I can hear you.
Eddie, you're part of the Public Works Department. I'm sure you, you have a landscape division of people to go around and clean things up in your department, right? I mean, you've got stuff everywhere, and you may be near streets or whatever, and you have crews that go around and make sure things are trimmed up. Would that be a fair assumption?
That's 100% accurate, correct.
Okay, so, this particular group, let's see, two, four, six, seven plants getting out of control, I'm pretty sure you guys would be able to handle this and make sure it looks nice all the time, although the tank is large, and that's what we're trying to cover here, but I'm sure you guys would take care of that. Am I correct?
Yeah, trimming, trimming is part of, we have a maintenance, landscaping, maintenance contract that can take care of trimming of the trees if they get too tall or too wide.
Great, thank you, sir.
Eddie, how would you tell your crew to trim if you had no parameters on the size of the bushes or the right-of-way or anything else? Right now, the resolution says, "Plant some trees," okay? There's no height limit, no width limit. How would you do that? Would you suggest a height limit and a width limit? Would you, would you be okay with the toyon touching the tank? How, what would you... What would you require for the walk-around? How much space should a fireman have to walk around that tank?
You're, those, yes, we do need parameters. I am not a, you know, qualified to, you know, speak on what parameters are needed, but that's definitely something that needs to be taken into consideration so we can, you know, properly maintain the vegetation.
Okay, now, what I'm only suggesting is that we have a height and a width limit. Now, one, we have to protect the walkway on the street. We don't want people walking in the middle of the street, and we don't, we want to keep the walk-around on the tank. So, I would suggest that, oh, we pick a height, maybe 10 feet or something, and say that it can, it can be no closer than, what is a standard fireworm walk-around? Five feet from the tank?
You got a fence there, Vice Chair, so...
Fence is eight feet tall.
Well, so, the height doesn't have anything to do with it.
You're not going to walk under a burning tree, okay?
If it's toyon, the toyon will spread beyond the top of the fence and spread out like an umbrella.
Okay, so, I'm just talking about minimums. I think you need a five, five-foot minimum distance from the foliage, from the tank, and you need, and Adrian, you can tell us this, how much right-of-way does the public have on the street?
Yeah, so, thank you for asking the question. I was looking into that, and so I have an answer for you. And before I get to the width, I also want to mention the height. So, there are overhead cables right above the landscaping, which they will have to maintain the landscaping to be below the height of those. And so, the height, the height of the landscaping is expected to be probably 15 feet, so if the commission is okay with that, we can say, you know, that the trees not be any taller than 18 feet, or excuse me, than 15 feet, because that's probably where they're going to be maintained anyway, so that they don't interfere with the cables above. In terms of the width, there is 17 feet of shoulder where the landscaping will be placed. So, there is at least seven feet of width that can accommodate, that can be used to accommodate landscaping, maybe more, and still not interfere with any walkway that can be placed within that shoulder area.
Okay, so, we can make a proposal saying that, that it can be no more than 15 feet high, no, no closer than five feet from the tank, and no, and no more than seven feet from the fence, and that leaves you a right-of-way and a walk-around. Now...
I would second that, but I, and I also have concerns that that would be difficult to achieve with toyon. I would suggest that California wax myrtle or Catalina cherry, Prunus leoni, either one of those has a more vertical aspect and isn't going to spread quite as wide.
Adrian, a question. Do you know what the overhead wires were? Because that came up at the last hearing, and that's one of the reasons why we demanded generators, because the wire, the electricity at that time was on those poles.
So, the lower wires would be your communication wires. The electrical wires would be at the top of those poles, so those would be much higher. So, the lower ones, I think we gauged them to be somewhere around 16 to 18 feet in height from the ground.
That's true. You can't be anything lower than 17 feet. That's, so you're right on.
Okay, so, I, before we get to the kind of trees, I think our, what we should put in here, because there is nothing, we should put in a maximum of 15 feet high, a minimum of five-foot clearance between the tank and the foliage, and a maximum of seven feet from the fence for the foliage in the front, which is what...
Instead of saying that, then maybe you would want to say, "Why don't you maintain a five-foot walkway around the tank? And why don't you maintain a 10-foot open area for a walk path?"
Because he needs to know what to cut, not what not to cut.
That will allow him what to cut. That will tell him what he needs to maintain.
Well, it's six and one-half, and that's the other.
And I don't see the reason for doing the height limit on it, especially if there's overhead lines, because they were tired to cut it anyways.
One concern is that toyon in particular is very torch-like in the way it burns. It's got a lot of oil, and if those wires are at 17 feet, a 12-foot-high toyon is going to have flame lengths that could burn out that wire. So, to say 15 feet is okay under a 17-foot wire is not a good idea.
Wire is not going to burn. What's going to burn is the pole, if it's wood, and that's how that's going to work. So, that would not be the concern.
We're not talking about power lines, wires. We're now talking about the communication wire.
You're talking about communication signs, okay. If that's your concern, that would melt. You are correct.
Okay.
I just don't see the reason for all of this stuff at the last minute, and I'm just not comfort, I mean, I'm totally comfortable with the design of this. They know that they have to maintain a five-foot fire department clearance around it, so I don't see the reason for all these restrictions.
Well, the reason is fires. We just heard about houses burning down, and you don't give a permit to plant without some parameters, especially on city property, okay? City property. What do you do when somebody doesn't trim it, and people have to walk in the middle of the street and somebody gets hit? Who gets sued?
I think that that's a real concern. I do very much understand that concern.
Will you go along with seven feet from the fence? That's what it takes?
I, I don't know. What I think is important is for them to maintain a 10-foot walk path in the right-of-way.
And how are you going to measure that?
Yeah, it'd be easier.
It'd be easier for them to make their measurements from the fence rather than from some point between, you know...
If everybody's comfortable with that, then just say to keep it within seven feet of the fence. I don't have no problem with that.
Okay, and five feet of the tank.
But I also would like to say that as the trees get taller, and somebody can walk through, I have no problem with the tree growing out and creating a shady area for people to walk. I think it's beautiful.
On city property, in the middle of the road.
You ever walked in most cities? There's trees, and you can walk in the shade.
Yeah, and they have sidewalks.
Some do.
They don't plant them in the tree, in the street.
No, our, our community has more than enough trees that are in the city right-of-way. They might not have been planted by the city, but they do exist.
I know, and that's why my house almost burned down, okay?
Yeah, I think you might even have some at your house.
They've been cut.
Okay.
Okay, now, now, then there's a second question. We need, in other words, there's nothing in this resolution. We need that in there. And then the other thing is, we have no...
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
I'm going to make another motion.
Then do it, let's hear it.
Okay, I make a motion that we have a five-foot clearance from the, from the tank, seven-foot, seven-foot foliage from the fence, 15 feet high of trees, and then I'm going to make another motion that since the city biologist never looked at any plans for this, okay, and said 42 inches, that the city biologist must pick a fire-resistant plant rather than a torch to plant there, and that's up to the city biologist.
I'm going to disagree with the second part of that, if you want a second.
Okay, do you second it? Are we, are you really going to have?
I'm going to listen to the city attorney real quick.
And so, I just want to, you know, and Vice Chair Maza, I'm reading the section that you referenced that you use as the basis to say the city biologist never looked at the plans. Once again, I was not over, I believe this was Dave Crawford.
Yes, Dave Crawford, yes.
So, I can't attest that I was in the room when he did it. What that lines, what that says is, "View impermeable hedges occurring within the front yard setback serving the same function as a fence or wall shall be maintained at or below 42 inches."
42 inches.
So, it says 42 inches of height, but...
You're talking about on the other side of the fence.
Now, what does the, what does the city biologist say? There is absolutely not one single word written after 2020 by the city biologist about this property.
And that may or may not be accurate. I'm not saying that that...
What if it may or may not be accurate?
I'm not sure. All I'm saying is that the fact that it says 42 inches does not in itself prove it.
No, but it doesn't prove he did anything.
So, maybe...
Would you go out and get one today?
So, no. The referral sheet you're referring to is for the amendment, and the amendment application came in in 2020, and the approval granted by the then-city biologist was granted, was, was granted in November 16, 2020, after the amendment was submitted. Now, this was the second time the same landscaping plan was submitted to the city, as mentioned in the staff report presentation. There was an original landscaping plan with the project, which the applicant decided to remove right before the, the project was approved by the Planning Commission. Both times, they were reviewed by the city biologist. Now, regarding the toyons, you know, there was, there was a lot of conversation about the type of tree that should be used here, because there's going to be a lot of pipes that are going to be below grade, and they wanted to make sure that the root system of whatever tree or plant that they picked would not interfere with those pipes. And after discussing the issue with the city biologist, they opted for toyons because they don't tend to be as disruptive with structures below grade. They also picked toyon because toyon can be maintained as a hedge. It can be maintained low, and it could also be maintained as a tree, so, and it's a native protected tree in the city. And so, as a, as a result of all of that, the city biologist actually approved the project with the toyons because he felt that was the right species for this type of, you know, request.
Now, why isn't that in the staff report? And why do we know that that happened?
Well, I'm explaining it now because the question came up.
I know you're explaining it now, but, but why didn't you include it in our staff report? Why didn't the city biologist sign? Aren't we required to have findings? And aren't those the findings based on what the city biologist says? And now you're telling me, after three rounds of emails, "Oh, yeah, Dave Crawford looked at it?"
Well, the referral sheet is part of the record. It's an attachment to the staff report that was published. When you were asking the question, I was not aware that you were under the impression that the approval was invalid, but rather that your, your question was regarding the condition of approval, about 42 inches, which Mr. Donigan just explained the reason for that condition. I was, I was, again, not aware that you had, you had a concern about the approval.
Is, is, can you show me where this Dave Crawford report is in the staff report we received?
It's not, it's the referral sheet, you mean?
Whatever. You're telling us this was determined, but we don't have any evidence of that.
So, the referral sheet you're referring to is actually the same thing I'm referring to, but that, let me see what page that is.
It's not a staff report, at least.
It is page 21 of 26 of the staff report.
There is a referral sheet, but it doesn't have detail about species.
Right. The detail, I mean, the, the referral sheet specifically says this is for an amendment, so this, this was post the approval, and it gives the approval date, again, the date I just gave.
2020.
Exactly.
And where is this? Where does it say toyon?
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
Well, he approved the landscaping plan. That's also part of this project.
Oh, the landscape.
And that plan was produced in 2020.
That plan was likely produced before that. It was produced originally for the CDP.
Okay, if you want to burn the city down, my, I will amend my motion to approve this with the 15-foot, seven-foot, and five-foot limits.
I have another just quick clarification. I just, to understand, two things. One, we're approving development in the public right-of-way. I didn't, I didn't think we had authority to do that, but apparently we do. Secondly, it's talking about a permanently-installed irrigation system, and for something like toyon or buckwheat, you need to get it established, but you could do that with a soaker hose and a timer, and after, you know, three months, six months, you're done. I don't, this is maybe just a cost thing, but they shouldn't need to be putting in a whole irrigation system for this. It's a small point.
Yeah, I have no issue with them having a small irrigation system.
Hey, are you okay with my amendment?
I was okay all along. Was there a final change to it?
Yeah, they, they, I'm going to eliminate having to deal with planting toyon where it shouldn't be planted, so I, it's just the seven, fifteen.
Okay, so, you have a motion. Are you seconding it?
We, we've got the, the five feet around the tank, the seven feet from the fence, the fifteen-foot high, and.
That's it.
That's it?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm seconding that.
Okay. Adrian?
So, I, I just want to make one point. There is a request to make sure that the landscaping maintains a five-foot setback from the tank, and I want to make sure that that is not, it's not part of this application that the landscaping extends beyond the property line. And if that were the case, then we would have to process a variance for that. So, the project is to install and maintain the landscaping completely within the public right-of-way. The minute it starts encroaching inside the property line, then we have a, we have a setback issue.
We're only talking two feet. So, so if you're saying if, if the, the, the motion is seven feet from the fence in the right-of-way, fifteen feet high, if they go the other direction, they're violating their permit?
Yes, and there's no plan to make the landscaping extend into the property line. Anyway, their landscaping is, I mean, their fence is already, you know, already has lots to not allow the, the landscaping to go through, and, and they have a ten-foot distance from the landscaping to the tank, and they would like to maintain that, that separation.
Well, if you, I mean, the toyon, when it grows taller than the fence, it will just grow in over the top of the fence.
They, they will just have to keep trimming it to make sure that stays in line with the fence.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Hold on, but based on what he's saying, he's saying that you don't need to have the five-foot requirement? He's just saying.
That's right, I, I just changed it to seven and fifteen.
I'll, I'll accept the modification.
Okay, so you're changing it to the foliage must stay within seven feet of the fence and it can only be fifteen feet high?
Right, and then if they go the other direction, they're violating their permit.
Okay. Do we have any other motions or any more comments on this?
I'm willing to support the maintenance, adding a condition that would maintain a walkway adjacent to the street of a distance, ten feet.
Ten feet.
Yeah. But that's as far as I'm willing to go.
Well, Jeff, that's my motion, so we can put in that motion that shall be maintained at.
Okay, your motion is that, but it also has a height restriction. So, are you okay with the height restriction or no? No, okay. So, do we have a subsequent motion? Okay, let's, we'll have a vote on this motion right now that's on the table. We'll go with a roll call.
I just want to be sure, so, Mr. Fernandez, you fully understand the, I obviously have the language written down. Conceptually, I just want to make sure staff is comfortable with the motion on the floor.
Yes, I am.
Got it. Sorry, Mr. Jack.
All right, Rebecca, may we please have a roll call?
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
My name, I didn't go in here with the mask on. No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Chair Peake?
Negative.
Motion fails.
Okay, so, I heard the start of a subsequent motion, but I'm just going to make it. Is that's okay? I'm going to just make a motion that the foliage stay within seven feet of the fence, with no height limit.
I'm sorry, Scott, what did you?
I'm makes, just saying that it stays within seven feet of the fence, there's no height limit. And we'll have a, oh, I didn't get a second.
Ask a question on your motion?
You can.
Would you do that for a house?
It's not a question of doing it for a house, it's doing it to hide a water tank. And, and the, the other thing is that there are lines over it, and the lines require it to be cut at a certain height, and I think that people that live there and drive by do not want to look at it. And if those can grow up to that height and they don't have to look at it, I think that's a benefit to the community. That's why I'm making that finding and motion. And, so I have a second by Jeff.
Do you include maintaining at that, though, those distances?
We, we asked the Public Works Commission, Eddie, that question, and he answered, yes, they have crews that handle that.
Yeah, but the question is, does the city have enforcement over its own property? It's city property, shouldn't the city have a maintenance requirement on city property?
The maintenance requirement that we've put forth is that the trees stay within seven feet of that fence. And I don't think that there's any other issue with that.
For the record, it's not city property. It's privately owned and they haven't, the water hasn't eased.
Sorry, in the city right-of-way. Correct, the city has an easement over the front part of that property.
I, I, I'll vote yes. I, it's, I don't think it's as good as John's, but I'm still, it's still okay.
All right, so, we're going to go with a roll call.
Chair Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings? Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Time for fire safety, no.
Motion carries.
All right, we're now at, we're done.
Well, we aren't, we have a presentation.
Yeah, we have seven, eight.
Presentation.
The amended.
Oh, yeah, it's removed, sorry. It's in my, my, I have the old copy in front of me.
Thank you.
All right, I think that you are going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Does, is it removed forever or is it coming back?
Based on city council direction, the city council wants to receive a yet-to-be-scheduled presentation on formula retail clearance prior to the presentation being provided to the planning commission.
So, we are going to hear it at some point?
Yes, following a presentation to the city council.
I, I'd like to move adjourn in honor of Walt Keller and the services provided to Malibu.
Yes, I will support that.
Second that.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.